All right, welcome to this evening's meeting. We are going to have the invocation by Pastor Elder T. Matthews, co-Pastor of New Testament Gospel Worldwide Ministries, and it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Amen. Let us bow our heads and pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you on tonight for just being a part of this meeting. Lord, we thank you for the Commissioner and the Board, God, that you would just continue to bless them and allow your peace to permeate this place. Father, I thank you for everything that is tabled in this place on tonight, that you're gonna receive the glory. God, allow the peace to enter into all of our hearts and our minds will be stayed on you. Thank you in advance and keep all safe from harm, hurt, or danger. And God, I thank you that it is done, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the September 20th, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I would like to ask that we remove under item number nine, under Human Resources... No, it's a resolution, I'm sorry. Twenty sixteen dash one six seven and number nineteen, which is Emergency Hazardous Material Cleanup Contract. Lego wants to further vet that out. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, is unanimous?
Are there any further amendments?
Madam Clerk, items number four and seven, two dash four and two dash six pertaining to... I'm sorry. Pertaining to the budget amendment for landscaping along 138 and Terra Boulevard, I'd like to remove that from the agenda for further discussion.
Which items are those?
They didn't have a number. It's number four, Recommendation, it does not have a RFP number, just as Recommendation.
It's four under the Central Services.
And then item number seven is, I believe it's two dash six, or RFP sixteen oh one, sorry. No, 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 that's not right. Number five, under number seven, it is two dash six, general to reappropriate the hundred thousand from last fiscal year? I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm not clear what is... Which one is it?
Under, under the menu, item number seven, sub, sub number five, Budget Amendment two dash six.
Okay.
There, got it out. Regarding the hundred thousand reappraisal from last year's fiscal budget.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Was there one or two?
There was two.
There are two. One is just the funding for the other one.
Oh, so it's the same.
Number four, and then under the seven for CFO. And number five, are you clear on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's a motion and a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, is unanimous?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, who made the second?
Commissioner Hamburg.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing non-may, we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendments.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, is unanimous?
We have two sets of minutes for the Board's approval. The first is September sixth, 2016 Regular Business Meeting Minutes, and the September sixth, 2016 Work Session Minutes. May we have a motion to approve both?
So moved, second.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, is unanimous?
The Board will now hear public comment. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, citizens have signed up to speak before the Board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and count of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, Unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. Your evaluations continue in your fourth series of evaluations in the area of how all five of you, as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, are operating and working together as a five-member commission team as you complete your fourth year together collectively. In my opinion, all five of you do not collectively have a singular, united, unified, crystal-clear vision of moving Clayton County forward and upward in the correct and right direction for excellence, success, and greatness. Virtually every major decision that all five of you have made, you have been divided and polarized, and that has been reflected and shown in many three-two votes, which shows and is a reflection of your disunity, dissension, and discord. All five of you exert no control over the splosh contractors and splosh works done in Clayton County, and it shows in the most glaring example with splosh work done in Commissioner Rooks, District Three, on where landscaping and grass was utterly and completely destroyed, and the laying down of sidewalks on Panhandle Road where also trash and construction debris has been left and where the entire area is unsightly dirty and the work poorly done. All five of you have lost complete control of Clayton County and that these low-end businesses and apartment homes continue to blatantly and willfully disregard and violate our county codes, ordinances, rules, laws, and regulations. All five of you have given up and just do nothing to control and limit the glut and proliferation of the used tire stores all throughout Terra Boulevard and unincorporated Clayton County, which is so bad and out of control that that is the dominant and main business in Clayton County. In my view, you are a contented, satisfied, status quo, stand pat, play it safe, reaction only, just let it ride and it'll take care of itself, Commission, not showing, doing, or taking direct, firm, hands-on, standout, out-front leadership and decision-making, power, command, and authority in addressing and solving Clayton County's main problems that I have brought before you in previous public commenting sessions. All five of you are just stoic, indifferent, uninterested, unconcerned, unmotivated, apathetic, and nonchalant on citizens' concerns that are brought before you during a public commenting session for you to address, solve, and take action on. I no longer hold all five of you with the greatest and highest regard, honor, esteem, respect, acclaim, distinction, and approval, including your past accomplishments, achievements, and successes along with your present areas of performance deficiencies, drop-offs, and inactions. Your performance evaluation numerical rating grade as our five-member Clayton County Board of Commissioners is a five point zero five out of ten, which is just right at average, okay, and ordinary. It is my sincere hope that all five of you will work harder, better, and care for the citizens of Clayton County and will work for us and in our best interest and not work against us, and also not just work for your own personal self-serving interests and in the interest of your own personal inner circle of friends and your own political supporters, loyalists, and campaign money contributors. Good day.
Mr. Larry O'Keefe.
Larry O'Keefe, Rex, Georgia, District One. It's good to see you all again, it's been a while. I'm here tonight really at behest of my son David, who lives in District Three down at Folsom. He brought something to my attention and asked what could be done. I said, "Well, we can bring it to the Commissioner's attention." There's a transition in process with a new technology, the LED streetlight. The LED streetlights are slowly but surely replacing the high-pressure sodium lights. The issue is the... Our street lighting ordinance was last revised in July of 1973. There are concerns. The AMA has recently issued a community guidance to reduce the harmful human environmental effects of high-intensity street lighting. There... The LEDs can have what they, what they call a color temperature, four to five thousand Kelvin. The current sodium lights have a color temperature of about twenty-two hundred Kelvin. The effect of this is glare, blind spots, and, you know, issues of that nature if you do a direct replacement with a high-temperature fixture. We need to look at this, reevaluate the installation, and write an ordinance that updates and takes this into consideration, not only for street lighting, but for business lighting. Lot of businesses I've noticed are putting in these LED panels on their building facing outward, which trespasses upon the right-of-way, causing glare and blind spots to drivers. This is an increasing problem. It's been done in California more so than here, to the point that there was one city in California where these citizens demanded and passed, it's California, a referendum to remove them after they had been put in. So I'm thinking if we can be proactive, get the information, redo our ordinance to take this into effect, we can be ahead of the game and one of the first in Georgia to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Is there a way to price that?
Jeffrey Benoit.
Good evening, Jeffrey Benoit, District One, Rex, Georgia. I'm feeling some type of way today. Another black man was gunned down in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Hands up, gunned down, dead in the streets. I use that egregious act because a couple of weeks ago, we seen something similar from this Board. You put three people in position in the Housing Board to manage the affairs of that Board, where the ED, the Executive Director, was in violation of his responsibility. Those three people did the right thing. They censored him. The next week, they came back and overturned it. I don't know whether it pressure, was it fear, was it threats? I don't know, but they overturned it. And then there was the call to remove all three of them. And in emergency action, it was placed on the agenda and removed them. Why didn't you remove all five? You see, all five of them was on the same board. And where three was removed, you're saying the other two was right in seeing him violate a contract and letting him stay? These are intelligent people, and you are an intelligent Board. However, I don't understand how you could not remove all five of them and then put three more in place and watch next week at their first meeting, his contract will be exonerated somehow. At this point in time today, he's still in violation of his contract. He is in violation of his contract. And I would call for this Board to make an emergency agenda, item on your agenda, and get rid of that whole Board, get rid of that ED, because where you failed to do your job as a Board of Commissioners, of elected officials, is just like killing this county. Killing this county. We don't have to be in a coffin to be dead, but to be dead to spirit and be dead to respect and be dead to the things that we would hope that you would have, the integrity to do the right thing, the will to do the right thing, and the will to say that I represent this county. I don't see that. I can stand by what Mr. Anderson had to say in a lot of his commentary. I don't see that. Because you sit here and watch three people get removed for doing the job they were appointed to do, because he was offered an illegal contract by Mr. Edmondson for three thousand dollars a month for eighteen months, and we still cannot to this day find one thing that he told anybody as an advisor, as a whatever he calls himself, that values this county. But he's getting paid three thousand dollars a month of taxpayers' money. And then we're going to want to what? Balance our budget off of this mess. Balance our budget. Board of Commissioners, you have a responsibility. Now, you gave him that contract. You allowed him to have that contract on the top of his contract where he was already inviolated. And you have an attorney here who should be able to intervene in this mess. Thank you so much.
Your time is up, thank you. Mr. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. I spoke about quid pro quo and collusion, and it didn't do any good. Now let's get to the point, corruption. Corruption is a form of unethical and dishonest conduct by a person entrusted with a position of authority, often to acquire personal benefit. Corruption may include many activities including bribery. Political corruption occurs when a governmental employee acts in official capacity for personal gain. Lobbying is the act of attempting to influence decisions made by officials in government. Lobbying is often spoken of with contempt. The failure of government officials to serve the public interest as a consequence of lobbying by special interests is an example of corruption. Tammany Hall was a political machine in nineteen, seventeen eighty-nine that played a major role in controlling politics. In the lobby of the Hall, men would come in with satchels of money, bagmen, and give it to individuals, lobbyists, for political influence and favors. William Tweed was a politician known as Boss Tweed. Boss Tweed was the boss of Tammany Hall. Tammany Hall, Boss Tweed utilized control of city government to obtain a position on the County Board of Supervisors, which he then used to get appointments to have his friends placed in various offices. Boss Tweed was able to expand the corruption and kickbacks of his ring into practically every aspect of the city. His true source of power was the appointments of various, of his friends to various branches of governments. This position gave him access to city funds and contractors, thereby controlling public works programs. This benefited his pocketbooks and those of his friends. The question is, is Boss Tweed really Wade Starr? History does repeat itself. Wade Starr gets thirty-six thousand dollars a year for consulting fees to do nothing on a three-to-two vote by the Board of Commissioners. Collusion. Wade Starr had three Housing Authority members removed who voted to suspend him for breach of contract on a three-to-two vote by the Board of Commissioners. Quid pro quo. Approved Flatshaw's four-hundred-seventy-thousand-dollar concession stand and hired Centennial Contractors Incorporated after being told that they were being sued for ten million dollars for poor workmanship on a three-to-two vote by the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners one, two, and four. This is arrogance and incompetence. Quote a great line from a movie. "I'm a politician, which means by nature, I'm a liar and a cheat. If I'm not kissing babies, I'm stealing their lollipops. But it also means I keep my options open." I know, I know, the final vote is three to two.
Mr. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Chairman, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Clayton County. I, um... In a few meetings I've had, we have identified some properties. The properties are billable as far as the economic development engine. And as we look to the growth of Clayton County moving forward, I think that we have to seriously take a look at investing in ourselves and establishing a mixed-use development and possibly an arena. The properties have been identified, but there are several things that I think has to happen. And as a citizen, what I would like to see, I guess I officially got to ask my Commissioner this, I would like to see a citizen legislative summit to discuss a vision that the two state representatives and the seven... The two state senators, excuse me, and the seven state representatives, that we can compile a vision that they can take back to the Capitol to assist us in this endeavor. And the reason I say that is because in 2012, the State of Georgia received eight-hundred-and-ten million dollars in a lawsuit on, uh, that was nationwide. But at the end of the day, we received eight-hundred-and-ten million. January thirteenth, 2016, that inspired for the citizens that were affected, so the State of Georgia took control of that money. There's still, there's approximately about six-hundred million dollars left. So if we have a discussion with the state representatives and two state senators to say Clayton County is deserving of some of that funding, we were the hardest hit in the floor closure fiasco. And our calculations, and I think that because of the metropolitan population, that we are entitled to about fifty to seventy-five million. With that stated, then we can invest and purchase property for future growth to keep the millenniums here that, uh, that will be the growth for the county. And I just think that if we can get a legislative summit that the Board of Commissioners and the citizens collectively together can get a vision to take, to give to them, to present to the decision-makers at the Capitol, I think that we'll start being in the game. Secondly, Uber and Lyft are about to operate at the airport again. There's a user fee of three fifty-eight. Now Clayton County is not at the table, we need to get it to the table.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The Board will now consider request of Interim Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Ms. Rogers, please take them together unless the Commissioner wants a single one out. Here or now, please proceed.
Good evening. I have six items to present tonight. First item is a recommendation for extension of annual contract RFP thirteen dash twenty-four, which is swim lesson provider. The recommendation is to extend the contract with Tara Tarpoon Swim Association located in Jonesboro, Georgia. The extension period will be from October the first, 2016, through December the thirty-first, 2016, to complete the rebid process as requested by the Parks and Recreation Department. The Board of Commissioners approved this award on August the twentieth, 2013. The Department of Vendor Extension Acceptance and Amendment to the Agreement for the above referenced project has been attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation for annual contract amendment. This is for RFP fifteen, I'm sorry, RFB fifteen dash thirty-two, which is medical supplies for Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services. This is an annual contract. The recommendation is to amend the multi-award contract due to incorrect vendor pricing submitted for several items. The Board of Commissioner approved this award on May the seventeenth, 2016. We will be amending the contract for Bound Tree Medical LLC located in Dublin, Ohio, Harry Shin, Inc., located in Melville, New York, Nashville Medical and EMS Products, Inc., located in Springfield, Tennessee, Quad Med, Inc., located in Jacksonville, Florida, and S&amp;W Healthcare Corporation located in Brooksville, Florida. The items that we are amending are included inside of the package along with the agreements, and we have attached all of that for your review and recommendation. Next item is a request for first contract amendment for RFP fifteen dash fifty-eight. This is for Enterprise Resource and Planning Consulting Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The request is to amend the contract with Schaefer Consultant, Inc., located in Dana Point, California, to include contract negotiations as a result of the selection of two additional vendors for the ERP project for project critical data cleansing and change management oversight. The compensation will be in the amount of five-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-ten dollars, with a not-to-exceed travel amount of fifty-one thousand dollars. Funding is available through the Splosh Funds for fiscal year ending 2015. The Finance Department recommendation letter and amendment are attached for your review and information. Next item is item for recommendation to approve utilizing the U.S. Communities Cooperative Contract, number fifteen dash JLP zero-two-three with Train U.S. Inc. for HVAC products, installation services, and related products and services. The recommendation is to use the U.S. Communities Cooperative Purchase Agreement to upgrade existing equipment from Train U.S. Inc., located in Doraville, Georgia, in the amount of one-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Funding is available through the 2015 Splosh Funds. The Department Recommendation Memo, Vendor Quote, and U.S. Communities Cooperative Contract are attached for your review and information. Next item is a recommendation for renewal of a professional service agreement for information technology and programming services for Finance Department on a month-to-month basis. The recommendation is to review, to renew on a month-to-month basis with Moon Quest, Inc., located in Jonesboro, Georgia, beginning on December the first, 2016, and continuing until services are pre-reprocured. And this is with the ERP project that we're working on. The Department Memo and Professional Service Agreement are attached for your review and information. Last item is a recommendation for award of RFP sixteen dash zero-one, which is the 2006 Splosh Milling and Resurfacing of Various Streets in Clayton County, Georgia, for Transportation and Development. The recommendation is to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meet the specifications, which is CW Mathis Contracting Company, Inc., located in Marietta, Georgia, in the amount of four-million-two-hundred-sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Funding is available through the grant account in the 2009 Splosh Fund. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation, and agreement are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve all the recommendations and authorize the Chairman and his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the ten of the contracts and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, are there any questions on any of the items? Here or now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, is unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The Board will consider request of Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Bivens.
Please take them together.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I have six items for your consideration this evening. The first is Budget Amendment two dash forty-nine for fiscal year ending six thirty, 2016, to amend the budget in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars to cover additional other contracted service fees. Budget Amendment two dash fifty-five is for the Federal Narcotics Condonation Fund for fiscal year ending six thirty, 2016, to amend the budget in the amount of thirty-four thousand-five-hundred-thirty-four dollars to provide additional expenses for assets purchased directly by the Sheriff's Department. Budget Amendment two dash four is for fiscal year seventeen for the Police Department. This is to amend the budget in the amount of three-hundred thousand dollars to properly budget crossing guards, part-time wages, and benefits. Budget Amendment two dash five is for FY seventeen Federal Narcotics Condonation Fund, to amend in funds in the amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars to purchase two Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the Sheriff's Office. We have a request for refund in the amount of thirty, thirty dollars payable to Maria Cervantes to reimburse the customer for sterilization of a pet. And the last item is another request for refund in the amount of forty dollars to Deborah Lenny. This is to reimburse the customer for sterilization of a pet as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move that we approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move to second, are there any questions? Here or now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, is unanimous?
Thank you.
The Board will now consider request of Human Resources Officer, Pamela Amplis.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Human Resources, we have one item to present on behalf of the Police Department. The Police Department is requesting to create one police payroll technician, grade sixteen, step one, salary thirty-two thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents. The Police Department would also like to remove one police services clerk, grade twelve, step one, at a salary of twenty-six thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and forty-three cents. This is a five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollar difference in the positions. However, the request is budget-neutral. The Chief is requesting to use part-time money to fund the difference between the two positions. The employee who currently manages the payroll function for the Police Department is an administrative secretary at a grade fifteen, step one. She is responsible for ensuring that almost five hundred employees are... She is responsible for ensuring that almost 500 employees are paid accurately each pay period. The payroll function at the Police Department is complex, and the Chief wants to recognize the accountability and complexity of this function by creating the position of police payroll technician.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move in a second, any questions? Here or none, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Interim Chief Staff Attorney, Jack Hancock.
Please take them together unless they will separate one.
Yes, Chairman. I'll have nine items from various departments for your consideration. Number 10 is a request to authorize Clayton County on behalf of the Clayton County District Attorney's Office to enter into a grant award agreement with the State of Georgia Department of Human Services Division of Child Support Services and accept grant funds to be used in connection with child support recovery efforts associated with the District Attorney's Office. The grant amount is $683,658.20 with a required local match of $13,243.24. The grant period is from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017. Further requests authorize the Chairman and/or the District Attorney to execute any necessary documents and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, and to transfer any required match of local funds, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Second item is a request from the Elections and Registration Department requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the opening of three additional advanced voting locations for the November general election to be held on November 8th, 2016, as approved by the Board of Elections Meeting held on August 16th, 2016. Following additional advanced voting locations and hours are requested. Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Center, Carl Rodenizer Recreation Center, and South Clayton Recreation Center. The times are Monday through Friday on October 17th, 2016, and October 28th, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. The next request is to accept grant funds from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security in accordance with the fiscal year 2016 Homeland Security Grant Program to enhance the abilities of the Georgia Search and Rescue Team assigned to the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Department. Clayton County, the Fire and Emergency Services Department has been awarded, excuse me, $45,558 by the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security for equipment and/or supplies for enhancement for Clayton County, Georgia's Search and Rescue Team. Grant period is from October 1st, 2016 through October 31st, 2017. Further requests to authorize the Chairman to execute any necessary documents and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, and to transfer any required match of local funds, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. The next request is also to accept grant funds from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security in accordance with the fiscal year 2016 Homeland Security Grant Program for equipment and/or supplies for hazardous materials response efforts. Clayton County, the Fire and Emergency Services Department has been awarded $32,615 by the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security. The grant period is from October 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2017. The request further would authorize the Chairman to execute any necessary documents and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, and to transfer any required match of local funds, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. The next request is also a grant, a grant request to authorize Clayton County on behalf of the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court to enter into a grant award agreement with the State of Georgia Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and accept grant funds to be used in connection with the administration of Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court. Grant Award Number 1H79T1026773-01 in the amount of $214,211 for 2016, with recommended subsequent support of $212,170 for 2017, and support of $27108 for 2018, subject to the availability of funds. The initial award will be provided for a one-year period from September 30th, 2016 through September 29th, 2017, with potential subsequent funds through 2000, through September 29th, 2019. The funds will be used to provide salary fringe benefits and technology for three treatment counselor positions. All funds will be used to administer the Adult Drug Felony Drug Court program. Further requests the, to authorize the Chairman to execute any necessary documents and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, and to transfer any required match of local funds, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. The next item is Clayton County Community Development Department's request to authorize the adoption and submission of the 2015 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and amend the goal and target data reported in the 2013 to 2017 Consolidated Plan, to authorize the Chairman to execute any documents required for submission, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense as may be required. The next item is from Senior Services, from the Senior Services Department, and they request authorization to enter into a grant award agreement with the Georgia Department of Human Services, Department of Family and Children's Services, and accept grant funds to be used to provide kinship care services consistent with the Promoting of Safe and Stable Families Program. The grant award is $75,000 with a required local match of $25,000. No financial impact to the county as the grant allows for staff salaries to be used for the county's match. Grant period is from October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017. The request further would authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, and to transfer any required match of local funds, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. The next request is by the Clayton County SPOSS manager to authorize Clayton County to enter into the non-residential gas extension contract with Atlanta Gas Light Company for natural gas service at the new Clayton County Animal Control Facility located at 3199 Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Clayton County, Georgia, at a cost of $13,602.18, and to authorize the Chairman to execute the contract on behalf of the county and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the contract, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the contract. The next request is for permission to erect a fence at the entrance of the abandoned right-of-way formerly known as West Lees Mill Road, being approximately 69,935 square feet, or 1.61 acres of right-of-way, more particularly described on Exhibit A to the attachment, and shown as right-of-way relinquishment on the platte that is attached as Exhibit B. County has abandoned the property but not yet been conveyed to the property owners, and in order to avoid continued vandalism, the property owners are requesting permission to erect a fence at the beginning of the abandoned right-of-way. And the final item is a request of the Board of Commissioners to accept a memorandum of understanding between Clayton County Senior Services and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia, bound on behalf of Clayton State University.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make the motions, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in a second, any questions on any of the items?
I don't have a question, but it may be a correction if everything was read into the record on 14.
Yes, ma'am.
The amount for 2018 is $207,182. I think you said 102.
Okay, 182 is correct. If I said 102, you're exactly right.
Any other comments, statements, questions? Here or none, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we need an executive session for a real estate matter.
Next two items are board appointments. The first is the appointment to the Family and Children's Services Board to fill the expiring term of Keisha Dabney, who has resigned. The term is five years, expiring on June 30th, 2021. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Quinn Howard. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably move in a second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next appointment is to the Tax Assessors Board to fill the expiring term of Mr. Asagi. The term is for three years, expiring on October 25th, 2019. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Benjamin Pascal.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move in a second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
If there is no further business to discuss, there was a request to go into executive session on a real estate matter.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session.
Hold on. You can second it, but I have a question.
Okay, all second, it probably moved in a second.
Do we also want to discuss HR personnel matters, or are we holding that off for another couple of weeks?
I thought we was holding off.
Which one?
Oh.
We didn't, did you all want to pick one? Or talk about it at least?
We're gonna add to that, well, if we can get, who made the motion, to amend it to include.
Commissioner Rooks made the motion.
To include personnel matter.
Mr. Chairman, I move to include in our discussion for the executive session personnel along with real estate.
All second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. All right, motion to reconvene.
I move that we reconvene.
All second, probably move in a second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Like to make a recommendation that we hire Ms. Pamela Ampl's as the HR Director to be effective September 24th, 2016. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move in a second, any questions? Here or none, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
All second, it probably moved in a second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Good night.